I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for August 21st, 2024. Can we please have your call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Van Der Heiden.
Present.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
I'm here.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Present.
Councilmember Paul Lorrie.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Here.
City Attorney Renee Kabrick.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Canice, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority, therefore there is a quorum for this meeting.
Thank you. Would you please take a moment for personal reflection? Thank you, and would all that are able, please stand and join for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes were sent out for both the regular meeting on July 17th and the special meeting on July 29th. Are there any revisions or additions to it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Kevin to approve.
Second.
I have a second from Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, tonight, we have presentation from Gas, Water, and Utility Business Office. I don't know which one of you flipped a coin and lost, but, uh, Tim, you want to start?
Good evening. Tim Darsum, Gas and Water Manager. Just going to go through some projects that were started last year and going forward to this year and onward. So, on the gas side, installation of new gas main in Grassland Hills area to increase pressure. They had some low pressure during the winter a few years ago, and, uh, we took measures to take care of that. Eliminated a section of four-inch gas main to the old power plant that was not needed. We found that, uh, this year, so we eliminated that. Uh, we now use in-house welding to reduce costs. We used to call in USD I from Illinois, uh, past few years, and, uh, now we have a guy that actually does a lot of our welding for us, so saves us a lot of money.
And we pay him, uh, an increased rate.
Yes, we pay him for his welding services on top, yes. Uh, installation of new gas services, so, uh, moving forward. Continuation of the AMI installation. Hopefully, next year, we'll be complete with that on the gas side. We are looking at a project for next year to relocate a four-inch main around the Y area, Eighth and Bartley, to 231 and Fifth Street. We found out that there is, our gas line is running through a storm sewer, and since they're going to be redoing that, I believe in 2027, the highway, uh, we're going to go ahead and get that out of there to, for safety reasons. As of now, we have 4,358 gas services throughout the town. So, that's it on the gas side. Uh, moving on to the water side. Uh, water main replacements at University Drive and Dewey Street. University Drive had, uh, quite a few issues of leaks through the years. Took care of that. Dewey Street, since they were repaving that, uh, we went ahead and, uh, replaced main on that one.
Did all those, the connections to the houses get changed too when that was done or not?
All the connections are back up, uh, to the, on Dewey Street.
On Dewey?
Yeah, yeah, all the connections are back, yes.
Those are all up to?
Yes.
To date?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, Newton Tank Rehab. It's been, uh, quite a few years, uh, since, uh, inside of Newton Tank was painted, and, uh, so we had a company in, come in and do that. We are still replacing old fire hydrants. We will continue that. We, we have a, quite a few old, uh, fire hydrants out there that, uh, no longer, we can, we can no longer get parts for, so, uh, we will be installing new fire hydrants throughout the town when needed. Moving forward, Mill Street, 9th to 15th, main replacement hopefully will begin October 1st. They're looking at a stop or a finish date around March next year, uh, so we'll see how that goes.
And that's preceding, uh, the new road?
Yes, that is, uh, the reason we're doing that is to, because, uh, Mill Street will be repaved in next year, I believe it is.
Or the community crossings?
Yes.
That we've applied for.
Right, so, uh, we're going to get that main replaced. It's over a hundred years old. Looking to replace.
You said 9th to 15th?
9th to 15th, yes.
Just on that project.
Yes. And then, looking to replace the water main on Jackson Street. That, uh, we're looking at doing that next year from, uh, 14th to 16th. In the last few years, we've had quite a few, uh, leaks in that area, so we want to go ahead and make sure we take care of that. Uh, also, continuation of the AMI installation. Hopefully, the water will be done next year also with the gas.
I think you reported what percentage you were complete on that at the utility service board. Do you recall what that percentage? You've got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, at this point, we are wrapping up and getting ready to submit the lead line inventory to IDAM. Uh, we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and ready to submit pretty soon here. So, within, I'd say, a couple of weeks, we'll be submitted, and then we'll just work on towards, uh, getting those lead lines that we locate, uh, replaced.
You submit that to IDAM, and then if you have too many lead lines, they do something about it? Or they find us or something?
What we'll do, what we do right now is inventory-wise, we will locate what we find, you know, copper, galvanized, service line, or lead line. And what, there will be some unknowns on this, but we have three years to make sure that everything's cleaned up on our inventory. But we want to make sure that we submit now before the October 16th deadline. Uh, so far, we have not found any lead line that's in, in, uh, in these older houses right now, so hopefully that continue. But, yes, once, uh, once we get that inventoried, then we will start getting those, having those people replace those lead lines, and we will get that taken care of.
We did ask for the public to respond to a survey. It was an audit of their own, uh, service lines, uh, that was done in a flyer, uh, utility stuffer, and, uh, the response on that wasn't great.
No, I was really disappointed in the response, so, uh...
I was wondering how that response would be.
We have, whenever we have a main break in that, we do check out the, uh, service lines. And then, there's times where, uh, if we do have any questions, that we will go inside the house and take a look at, if the meter's in, in the house, and we'll take a look in there and see what they have and identify that.
When a house is sold, uh, they have to replace at that point in time, don't they?
That's wastewater.
Wastewater.
Oh, it's just sanitary.
Yeah, that, yeah.
So, if a lead line was found in a home, is it the homeowner's responsibility then to replace that?
Yes, it is. Um, we, they should get a contractor plumber to get that replaced.
Nancy, um, we're talking about, um, now that we're doing this waterline project on, um, Mill Street, using that as an opportunity to notify all of the property owners along that route to, um, have their inspection done so that they can determine for sure if they have any kind of lead lines, and then, um, and as part of that process, um, identifying some kind of a program, whether that's the property owner paying 100% or a 50-50 program like we've done in the past for sanitary or something. So, um, using those kind of projects as an opportunity to, um, mark off, you know, get as many houses inspected as possible.
Well, I was just wondering, on that survey that was done, if you had a lead line, you probably weren't going to respond that you had one. It just seemed like, I mean, they may, people may have, but it, it wasn't a mandatory survey either.
Right, correct. We did, uh, check the service lines on Dewey Street when we did that, and we will check on Jackson Street also on that.
Did you find any lead lines on Dewey?
Nope.
Down there, Tim? Galvanized?
Everything's good. Everything's copper.
We own a home on 15th Street, yeah. We had a problem with galvanized pipe a few years ago, which we replaced out with copper, but it was, yeah.
Yeah, I know how galvanized is.
It's just gotten smaller and smaller and smaller.
You get a trickle.
That's right.
Okay, and then, uh, we will continue, like I said, to go forward with fire hydrant replacements. And then, looking forward to the completion of emergency backup water supply. Hopefully, we get everything, uh, completed this year. And we now have 6,956 water services throughout the town. And as of the end of July, our 24/7 filtration plan has treated 385,48,070 gallons of water. Our microbiology lab has set up and tested 1,099 drinking water samples and 1,004 and 69 pool samples. So, that's quite a, quite a lot of samples. That's about all I have for you tonight, if you have any more questions.
I have a question from July Utility Service Board Meeting Minutes. Um, you had debris removal and inspection of the Potoka River Dam. Was that the dam down here?
It was the inlet.
The inlet?
Yes, yes. We had a company come in, uh, take a look at our inlets. The last time we had that inspected, I believe it was 2012.
That's what it says.
Twelve, yeah. Uh, so, there was a screen that was off of one of the inlets. It was replaced, put back on, and then we found a small limb in, in one of the other inlets, so everything's clear.
Okay. And the water was low enough to be able to do it now?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Tim, just another point for the future, uh, so for council's awareness. PFAs, um, if, if you haven't heard of them, you will hear of them.
Yeah, PFA's coming out. Uh, IDAM EPA's really hitting it hard. We had sample before. Uh, we're looking good on those samples, uh, so hopefully, uh, we come out clean on that. But, yeah, PFA's is a man-made material that's been getting into the water systems throughout the United States, and, uh, a lot, a lot of different materials.
It's, uh, it's the type of material that's been used on Teflon, skillets, uh, so it's non-stick. You know, firefighter suits, uh, Gore-Tex carpets, you know, the non-stickable materials.
Scotch guards.
Yeah, Scotch guards, and it's everywhere. It's everywhere, but they've, they've raised the flag on that, and you're going to start seeing some regulations come out as far as meter requirements on testing.
Correct. And we will be doing, uh, coming up here shortly, we will be doing UCMR, uh, six testing coming up in that uncontaminate, or contaminated, uh, water possible. More, uh, what I would say is more contamination in the water. Uh, so, we, all the water utilities are doing that also, looking for more, uh, testing.
Yeah, the maximum acceptable level of these PFA's is, are four parts per trillion.
Yes, very low.
Which is, you know, you take three water tank, three of the big water tanks, and think four drops in those water tanks.
Yeah, it's getting, regulations on both the gas and water is really getting, uh, getting hardened down.
Yeah, it's, it's been, been, uh, uh, I'm going to say, there's a correlation between that and cancer patients, and it's in everyone's blood today. You know, there's, there's very few people in the world today that don't have some exposure to it, so it's a matter of how we get our arms around that for the safety of the long term. The PFA's are also, um, captured in the body and disposed through the wastewater plant. So, we're going to have to look at our wastewater operations and how we handle that in the future, because I think the current practice of, of distributing on farmland with MSDS, you know, with all our safety data sheets, I think that'll go away. I think they'll end up requiring incineration or some other process, is what I was told today.
Correct.
So, we've, just new challenges down the road. But, you know, and Tim's right in the middle of all of it, you know? You want good water, you know, and we've got to have the utilities, that, that infrastructure that's really important to us, so we've got to stay on top of that.
Yeah, we understand that the safety of the community depends on us on both the gas and water side, so we always stay on top.
And then the Portersville Road, the, is that the backup water line coming in?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, they are laying pipe at this time.
And that should be done this year?
Yes, correct.
Is that six inch or eight?
That is 12 inch.
12, yeah. That's some water.
That's a lot of water.
Yeah.
But we have people ready to sign up and hook on to that, so we will be feeding new customers, so that's good.
On the north side?
On the north side, yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Congratulations on your 30 years.
Yes, sir.
Of the department.
Thank you.
Ashley. What's going on in the utility office?
Good evening. Ashley Kiefer here. Uh, just want to update you on, um, a few things going on in our office. Let you pass those around just for a visual, um, on the first item I wanted to update you on. Uh, every year, when I come in here, I like to let you know how the credit card and online bill payments are, um, progressing. Um, I'm happy to say, um, that the total paid monthly by card and the percentage of payments made online each month continues to climb. Uh, we're getting close to 20% of our payments in, um, that way now. Um, and we will like to continue to promote, uh, that payment method because that reduces the number of touches made by our customer service clerks, so that gives them more time to work on, uh, other things, so it definitely saves us, um, time. Um, in addition to that, um, more details on the, um, advanced metering infrastructure AMI project as that, uh, continues to progress. Um, like you all know, we're continuing to mass install the electric water and gas endpoints and meters in our system, the whole entire city. Um, electric meters, they're still waiting on the last 500 pieces, um, meters to be delivered from their initial order, which will help finish, um, um, their portion of the project.
They should be finished this year as well.
Yes, yes, mm-hmm. As of today, we have 14,512 AMI endpoints in the system, which, um, is approximately 75% of the project complete in total. Um, electric has 7,370 meters out there, which is 93% complete for them, and like the mayor said, they're expected, um, to complete that this year. If they get that last 500 meters, uh, they could knock that out in no time, uh, within probably a month or so. Uh, water has 4,057 endpoints out in the system right now, which is about 58% complete for their department, and gas is at 3,085, uh, which puts them at 70, uh, 70% complete right now. So, we're, we're, we're getting there, getting close. Um, in relation to that project, the billing department has been able to alert customers sooner about potential water leaks. Um, we are also, um, offering faster response time to electric outages and only occasional time spent rolling electric trucks for disconnects due to non-payment, uh, because we are now able to do both disconnects and reconnects remotely, um, on those electric meters, so, uh, saving a lot of time across the board for everybody there. Uh, we're also working to become more fluent with reporting and analyzing the data that's coming in, uh, through this new system. It's tons and tons and tons of data, so we're trying to sift through that and, um, get good at reporting on that. And then also, um, the smart meter portal, um, is expected to be introduced to our customers, um, by July of next year or hopefully before. So, that way, you all can log in from home and take a peek at your meters and see what they're doing and set up alerts for yourself to be notified of, like, potential water leaks, things like that. Uh, the big thing for, um, my department, um, in this last year has been staffing. I am happy to report that our, uh, department is now fully staffed. Uh, we had five business office employees retire in the last year and a half. Uh, we had two customer service clerks, two billing clerks, and our general manager. Uh, two employees also switched jobs internally in our department to, uh, fill the retirement voids. Uh, we hired five new employees externally, our general manager, two customer service clerks, and two business office assistants, uh, one of which then moved to a billing clerk position. Um, everyone has been working extremely hard, um, are settling into their new roles really well, and they're continuing to train to get fully up to speed. So, I'm really excited by the staff that we have in place, uh, right now, and I just want to thank the HR department for working with us for a very long time to get, uh, all that staff put into place. Uh, in case you're not aware, I just wanted to let you know who our current staff is. Uh, we have Karen Gruy as a customer service clerk, who has been with us for some time now. Uh, Stephanie Allen as a customer service clerk, who is one of our new hires. Uh, Whitney Huff as a customer service clerk, who is another new hire. Uh, Michelle Zare is now a billing clerk. She moved up from a business office assistant position. Uh, Jamie Eichmiller is the other billing clerk, who also started as a business office assistant and moved into the billing clerk role. Uh, Rodney Mitchell continues to be our meter technician. Uh, I, of course, am still the office manager. Uh, Mark Fierst has been in the controller role for, I think, four years now. And then Rob Young is our new general manager, who I'm sure you all have met, and Amanda Steckler is our, um, newest business office assistant. So, glad to have that all in place, uh, finally. And then, just some future projects we, uh, kind of have in the works going on right now. Um, with all this new staff in place, we're going to be working on, um, overall process improvements across all the, um, um, different sections of our department, um, hopefully with increased reporting, uh, to you all and our stakeholders on the utility service board side. Um, and also to be able to offer an enhanced experience for our customer through, uh, those new IT methods like the smart meter portal and that type of thing. Uh, we're also continuing to support all of our utility departments with their ongoing projects, like Tim just shared with you a while ago. And then, um, a big one for my, uh, staff is to continue to keep the bad debt write-offs at that low amount that we like to hang our hat on, so fingers crossed that we can continue to follow through on that. And that's all I have, unless you all have questions for me.
Ashley, I know that, uh, Rob is interested in customer service training. Do you know if that's been scheduled?
Yes, it has. Yeah, that'll be happening, uh, next month in September.
Okay, great.
Yep.
But that's not just for your, your office?
No, I think, I think they have an opening of like 70 employees, I think, in total across the whole city that'll be attending. But yes, all of my employees will be going.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Ashley, do you have that, that number, uh, did you give it, uh, what last year's bad debt write-off was?
I do have that here. Um, we wrote off approximately $14,000 last year out of $44 million in sales, uh, which equates to 0.03 percentage of sales. And that's, uh, been a pretty constant that we've been below 1% for the last, um, probably 10 to 15 years.
That's great.
A lot of follow-up from the office and appreciate what all the staff does there.
Yeah, we work really hard. We have a lot of methods that we pursue, um, to collect those funds. Of course, um, being able to disconnect for non-payment, it, you know, is a huge avenue and helps us with that. Uh, we also use a small claims process, um, to, uh, go after some of those people. We work with a collection agency, just a small tiny bit. And then, we also use, uh, the Trex, um, program that's offered by the state where we're allowed to latch on to customers' state tax refunds and to garnish our, um, unpaid debts off of that, and that's been really helpful as well.
And I want to emphasize too, if, if, uh, a resident comes into the business office and says, hey, I've got a hard time paying this bill, they work with that resident on a payment schedule.
Yes, absolutely.
We offer the program where you can average over the 12 months. We'll work with them to where they can get out of that, that hole, so...
Absolutely, and we have a huge list of places that, uh, our customers can also seek assistance from, uh, should they need it as well. So, there's a lot of churches and different groups, um, in the area that, uh, work with and, and help people with that as well.
Ashley does a great job managing that business office. You know, I think we're very fortunate to have her there.
Thank you.
And appreciate your report today.
How many years has you been there, Ashley?
Uh, I just celebrated my 18th anniversary.
Great. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Ashley, one, one more thing. I noticed that in-house payments went from 23 in, is that March of 21, to 238 now, is that right?
Yes.
What are you guys doing, throwing a happy hour?
No, it's just, um, people have been, were waiting for that, um, payment method to be introduced, so, um, you know, kind of as the demographic changes, you know, in the area with younger people, of course, that's, you know, easier for them, so they're more apt to want to pay that way, so you can kind of see that starting to change.
Interesting.
Yes, yes.
There's a parade into the office, uh, that time of the month, isn't there?
Yes, due date, uh, we're a busy hopping place.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Ashley. Next thing on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-10. This is an ordinance annexing certain adjacent contiguous territory into corporate limits of the city of Jasper, Indiana, the TRS subdivision. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only?
Go on, Paul.
Can I make a motion to go ahead and read by title only, please?
I have a motion from Paul, read by title only.
I'll second, or go ahead, Vince.
No, wait, sure.
And a second from Nancy. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent and contiguous territory into the corporate limits of the city of Jasper, Indiana, TRS subdivision.
This is on the north side, right?
No, this is out by, um...
Yeah.
The south.
VUJ.
Timber Ridge. Timber Ridge, Scott Sager's building.
Oh, 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 okay. I got you.
It, it's at the end of University Drive.
This is Roger.
I know which one you're saying, I just...
I was thinking the other one too, 47th of the speaker.
I'll make a motion to approve 2024-10.
I'll second.
Motion from Kevin, and a second from Chad. Any further discussion on this?
Just for your information, we are also in the process of filing, um, pleadings with the IURC to transfer this specific property to the city of Jasper Electric Department from the DuBois REC.
Good luck. Anticipating.
Is REC buying into that?
Yeah, yeah, they are.
It's a mutual, it's a very, uh, mutual, uh, filing, so, um, they determined that they could not economically or cost-effectively provide the infrastructure for that service.
Because that property never had a house on it.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Okay, I have a motion from Kevin, and a second from Chad. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion by title only.
Okay, I have a motion from Vince.
I'll second.
I have a second from John. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent and contiguous territory into the corporate limits of the city of Jasper, Indiana, Timber Ridge Estates 4 subdivision.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
So, move.
I have a motion for Paul.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten is passed. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eleven. Uh, could I have a motion to have the ordinance on the first reading in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read by title only, please, man?
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Kevin. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash eleven. An ordinance to rezone certain property within jurisdictional limits of the planning commission of the city of Jasper, Indiana.
I don't know if you or Paul want to make any comments on this.
Yeah, so so Daryl and Jennifer Klepper came to our uh plan commission meeting here and about, I don't remember what it was, fifteen, eighteen years ago, they built a new home and a barn on some property out off of County Road four hundred west. And at that time, uh it was before the planning offices were really there, but Dave Sager had them come in and subdivide that tract of land and then had to move it from uh A one ag to RR residential in there. They haven't changed anything on there that they've done. They built a barn a couple, like four or five years ago on it and just came back in actually participating in agricultural activities. And just wanted to know if we could get it put back in so that it is contiguous with A one ag back.
How many acres is it?
It's quite a few. It's part of the, part of the Klepper farm, uh his family farm that was out there on four hundred and they bought particularly, I want to say.
Actual tract is.
Ten maybe?
Yeah, I was gonna say five.
Four and a half acres.
Four and a half acres.
Rezoning.
Okay. Rezoning.
Got you.
So maybe it was a ten acre, ten acre tract total and four and a half of it is going back to A one from RR.
And everything around it is already.
It's already A one around it, so.
And so, but they currently have a house on this property.
They have a house on that property.
And looks like maybe some other buildings.
Farm.
Just across from where the old dump is, that one is.
Out that direction, but not quite across from there.
But is it in the city limits or the two mile jurisdiction?
Two is jurisdiction, yeah, two mile jurisdiction.
And then I had another question. Is is housing allowed in an A one?
It is if it's the primary residence of the of the farm.
So it's, that all within the zoning regulations?
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
So everything was good there. We gave it a favorable recommendation to come to the council this evening unanimously.
Appreciate the explanation, Paul. Um, could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
I have a second from Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then will that come back for a second and third reading? And it does say in here that it's four point five eight acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was the first reading on there, so. Other items to come up, I was asked earlier, and I'll bring it up now, uh regarding the Buffalo Trace. You know, we had the um the Schrader Golf Complex out there, practice golf facility that um was new this year. It was open in April. We did the rib ribbon cutting. And since then, we have, and this just goes through the end of July, we have sold two thousand six hundred and forty-nine small baskets and three thousand three hundred and fifty large baskets of golf balls.
Which is worth how much money?
Forty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Now, I will tell you, I'm disappointed a little bit in some of the way our public has treated it. It is not where you go get a basket of golf balls and put it in your trunk and drive away. We've had that happen.
That's probably on camera going in.
It wasn't at the time, you know, so. Yeah, it will, yeah, it will be in the future.
We need license plates if they have a camera going, you know, if you know.
There is, there has been, there has been some vandalism recently on on some of our properties and it's really disappointing.
I know.
Very disappointing.
But you know, this this facility is a great facility. You drive by, there's always someone out there using the practice facility. And I'm just really um tickled that we were able to get that thing up and running this year. At the same time, I do want to mention that golf, um, I mean, we're, we're on a record pace overall for total, total revenue. Uh, we're over five hundred, five hundred ninety thousand dollars right now for the, for the year to date, which is pretty damn good. Last year, we finished up twenty twenty-three with eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So we're, we'll close in on that plus some.
And that's actually a net positive. We're not, we're not losing any money on Buffalo Trace.
Right.
And it said sixty-five thousand was our break even on the, on the driving and practice facility. So when we hit that number, that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with the quality that Buffalo Trace has stepped up to. I think it's, it's elevated the quality of the programming out there and and you see more youth. You see a lot more youth. Uh, you know, we put in the, what is it, first T, first leaf or something like that, T's. That is, that has made a difference for getting young people involved. And having the practice facility, people like me can go over and practice instead of slowing up the game out there in the public, so.
Eric Shooter and his whole entire staff.
Eric's done a great job.
Job out there.
Yeah.
We're, we're lucky.
Yeah, I was asked about that right prior to the meeting and I thought I'd bring it up here at this point in time. Also, I know there's still a lot of questions around the regional wellness center. Um, there's a lot of information that is coming in the next week or two. Uh, actually, in the next month uh through September. Uh, we're still waiting on official notifications on the ready grants. You know, we received some of the uh financial analysis from Baker Tilly. I haven't had a chance to go through that and I really talked to him about it yet, but there's just a lot that's still in moving parts. We interviewed uh all of the submittals.
Four of the um respondents.
Four of the respondents. We interviewed them and narrowed it down and and uh we feel like we'll have that choice soon.
Paul's kept us up to date.
Okay.
Good job representing.
So then we will um, we'll be moving, once we've made the selection of who it is we're gonna work with, then we'll be moving toward that final design, costs and how we go about it. So there's just a lot that is still dependent upon choices. And so decisions have to be made along the way. It's no different than what was laid out prior. Timeline still remains similar to what we had before.
And I guess when the financing piece is finalized, then we'll know what our design is going to be.
Know what we can do.
Yep, yep.
Mayor, did you say that new information was sent from Baker Tilly?
I have, I haven't had a chance to review it yet, but then I've, I've got some questions on it because I'm not sure it's accurate. So before she gets shared, I want to.
Okay.
Have the scrubbing possibility if you don't mind. Know you's throwing numbers out there that might not be right. And so, but you know, we're, we're still moving on it and I think moving aggressively. I, I think once we get the decision on a contractor and move forward, we'll see the public get more engaged in it as well.
And when we find out about the ready grant, I mean, that's a big.
That's a big factor. I'm still optimistic, but.
Originally, wasn't that supposed to be the end of June?
Yeah, yeah.
What is it now, September?
It's September.
September.
From fifteen as well.
It's kind of what happened with Ready one point oh.
That's right.
Same.
That's critical to this project if we would get that, those funds.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a couple of things. Um, we, I've talked numerous times about a communication tool for the um citizens in our community. So Rob Young with utilities, he's really taken an interest in this also. And we have a demo set up with GoGov, actually another company that we already utilize within the city uh for a demonstration on Thursday, August twenty-ninth at nine thirty AM. So I'm, some others in here will be part of that, not just Rob and I. And then we'll report back on that product or another one or if we could utilize a better um contract with GoGov, if there's some discounts, if we use multiple of their products. So we'll see where that's headed. But Rob's very interested and I think he's willing to actually possibly fund it through the utilities, maybe for a trial or a first year period. So anyway, we have to work that out.
I think it's also addressing one of the key obstacles that we had going forward before was who's gonna be responsible. And I think it, talking to Rob, he can see that being delegated to the department rather than a centralized dispatcher or individual in the central office here.
Depending on what the communication was.
Depending on what it is, yeah. And and with weather, weather is done by NOAA, you know, it's not something we want to get in the business of doing, so.
And then other, another thing I had mentioned this to Renee at one time about short-term rentals such as Verbos, Airbnbs. And I did a little research and have a um, an ordinance from another community on I actually just establishing kind of a permitting process. And what brought this to light is my niece came down and stayed at a Verbo up by the hospital. I had no idea that that even existed. It's someone's home. And I don't know if the people, if the person lives there or what, but I thought, how many of these exist in our own neighborhoods that we don't know about? Or you might have people coming and going. So just something that maybe we could look into is some kind of a policy for a permit if you're going to operate a Verbo or Airbnb or whatever. It might be a short-term rental.
There's an interview on the interstate as well, just right behind you.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I don't even know where that one is.
Yeah, it's, you're right, the market's changed on that.
Oh, yeah.
And we need to get our hands, hands around it.
Yeah, and really, all you have to do is Google something like Verbos or Airbnbs in Jasper and you come up with.
I'm not sure, but I think they actually get taxed at a different rate too.
So anyway, just something I'm thinking that we could maybe look into and maybe pass an ordinance for a permitting process. And I don't know exactly what um department would permit that or anything, but we could look at that into the future. And then I also had someone ask me about things like electric scooters, electric bikes. There are a lot of little kids riding those electric scooters all over town, if you've noticed that. It's kind of scary really. And for the most part, they're not wearing helmets. And it seems like you don't see as many mopeds anymore that are regulated. I think you have to be fifteen to ride a moped. You have to wear a helmet, no two passengers and those kind of things, maybe have insurance. So I don't know if they're skirting that issue by getting electric scooters instead and not riding the mopeds. But it just seems like it's, it's dangerous because these kids are zooming all over town. And I mean, they look to me like they're ten, twelve years old, definitely not fifteen years old. So I don't know what kind of regulation or something we should look into for that.
I don't know, I don't know if you can regulate all that. I'll tell you.
I don't know.
We have one. We don't let our kids ride on the, uh, on the streets terribly in there, but four or five hundred dollars will get you a scooter that'll take you twenty miles at thirteen miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I mean, it's, it's what it is. How do you regulate that when you can buy them from, they're not buying them from one specific spot um in there. You can buy retail over the counter. We had ours delivered to the house um on there. And some of it's got to be on the parents to know what's happening with the kids as well. We don't have even a bicycle.
It's just scary. I don't want a child to be injured or killed because they're out zooming around on these things and really not stopping at stop signs and things like that either.
No one does, but again, some of that you have to take as a personal.
Yeah.
Personal uh responsibility for as well.
Parental oversight?
Yeah.
You know, and and that's, you can regulate all you want, but you gotta be able to enforce.
To force it, yeah.
That gets back to, you know, the challenge we had when we did start to enforce things. People grumbled because we were enforcing our own regulations and, you know, uh, it, we need to keep our eye on it. I, I agree with you. I've seen them and I, I think they are, are dangerous. But I, I, at this point in time, I think it is a parent's responsibility to look after the safety of their children that are minors using those kind of pieces of equipment.
I'm not denying that. It definitely falls back on to the parents. It's just.
Your, your VRBO, I'm gonna go back to that one for a second. That is something that we have had. We've had discussions about on the planning commission, the board of zoning appeals for the last several years as to where it was. And I think the, the suggestion at one point was making sure, first way to regulate was find out who it is and make sure they were paying the innkeeper's tax. You know, there was, there was some chatter about banning them outright at one point and.
You cannot do that. Well, I'm not suggesting, yeah.
But when we were talking about banning them, that was not a state statute yet uh in there, but they have to pay that innkeeper's tax. If we have an innkeeper's tax, by law, they should be legally signed on and paying that and kicking their percentages up to tourism.
I, I.
Yeah, five percent, I think.
There, there is a distinction, um, maybe not from a tax perspective, but there is a distinction nonetheless between those who um have a rent, a property that is used strictly for that kind of rental versus someone who has their own primary residence but occasionally rents it out for that purpose.
Yeah.
So.
The one on Mill Street, I will tell you, the person that owns that one lives in Denver, Colorado and has it so that they can, excuse me, DC, yeah, DC and and moved from Denver to DC. But uh rent, rents it here so that whenever they come home and they stay for an extended period with their family, they have a place here as well. When they're not here, it gets rented out fine. We have one right across the street from my house and the primary, their primary residence is in Atlanta, Georgia. And they come up every few weekends and they're working on doing the same thing, getting it fixed up and ready to go. So when they're not here, if somebody needs to come into town and stay, you can, you can rent it. This, this is an active conversation we're having.
You know, if, if they rent through a site like VRBO or Airbnb, are, are those taxes charged?
Tour, tourism's actually in charge of the VRBO. So they, they look at everybody that's out here and they, they get the money collected to them for the innkeeper's tax. It's their responsibility.
Well, that's not my, my concern is not really whether they're paying the innkeeper's tax. It's whether they're operating that next to my house or your house or wherever it is where people are coming and going. And anyway, just more of a permitting process to be knowledgeable of where these exist. I'm not, I, I don't care if they do it. It's a great idea. If you don't live here and you have a house here, you might as well rent it out while you're not here. But how, how to make us aware as a community that those exist.
But to the taxation point too, there's just the property tax rate itself is different on those properties.
It is.
Yes, it would be.
Two percent?
Two percent, somewhere.
So we would benefit in that way as well. On, on the subject of taxation, I'm curious to know on the uh shifting gears here, uh food and beverage tax, how are our receipts on that?
The last several months have increased tremendously, so we should, I'm not sure yet if it's um, some of those people that weren't paying maybe in the beginning have been catching up. Um, so I think we'll see it level off a little bit here, but right the past three, the past two months, our receipts have been pretty high.
Have we had to have people that aren't paying yet?
Um, so I was in contact with the Department of Revenue. Um, I provided them with a list of people that we sent letters to, of businesses that we sent letters to. And they um from there in, then it was completely confidential. I, I wasn't allowed to know who was paying and who wasn't. But they um said that they would address it. And since then, we have seen an uptick in. So I assume there was people that hadn't paid and maybe were just having trouble figuring it out. They touched base with them and got it straightened out.
I was at a meeting, uh, it was an A meeting, I think, we were at a roundtable at one point where someone had a food truck vendor from not in the community and, and wanted to come in and, and get in there but couldn't figure out how to pay.
Right, right.
Was, was one of them, I think.
Oh, yeah, we, we had that.
Correct. Had that figured out.
Oh, I forget what her name was, but I worked with the lady for a long period of time and we spent hours on the phone with the Department of Revenue. And she did call me back and say that she finally figured it out, but it was the same situation, so.
Yeah, um, I just came back from ICOM, Indiana Conference of Mayors today. And um, one of the big discussion points was of course taxation and, and uh property tax. You know, you've seen the couple of proposals that are out there about capping and, and reducing and, and how that plays out. Um, we don't know how it's gonna play out. Well, what we do know is that um all the mayors support um not having the variability from one year to another. Um, in agriculture, the average is out over five years, I think it is, um, what, what their tax and income is and then come up with the, the amounts of the, there's a smoothing effect. We didn't have a smoothing effect. So that's, that was the abrupt slap in the face that we all received.
Mayor, one thing to add to that, we knew this five years ago. And at the county level, they chose not to add more on there. They whipped it all on the fifth year. I looked into this.
They did, um, they put, they set a maximum of how much they would increase the assessed value over the past five years. And the past, the last year, they took that maximum off and they went straight up. So you're right.
Yeah, so all, all those things that we were hearing a lot of noise about, you know, I think in, in any of the proposals and it's gotta go through, it's not just the governor or that, that is gonna make that happen. It's the legislature as well and Senate. It's the legislature as well and Senate. They all have to work together to come up with some kind of a solution for that. Don't know that there will be change. I know there'll be a lot of discussion. And it'll take some time for, for a positive change in that, but there, there could be some limits set. And, uh, I think that would make sense. I think most mayors would get on board with that as well. But what we want, we want to make sure that, you know, if we, if there is a reduction in property tax, then how do we fund services that the people want? It has to be some kind of a local tax then implemented if it's not at the state level. And really, the property tax comes back to us in the county and, and the cities, so. A lot of, a lot of good discussion on it, no answers. Uh, I think, uh, all the candidates are bringing out some of the proposals and there'll be some, some really good involvement over the next several months. Yeah. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
I have a second from Vince. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.